Okay councillors, that's the conclusion of public forum. As you'll be aware, or it may not be, if you're new, we usually indicate how we intend to respond to submissions to public forum. I note that in this instance, the subject matter of all of the submissions is actually on the agenda today. So it will be dealt with, all of those will be dealt with at this meeting today. So we'll go on to the next item, which is apologies. And I note there are no empty seats, so there are none. Confirmation of the agenda. I will move from the chair that the agenda as published be confirmed, seconded councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, carried. Declaration of interest is for noting. And we move on to councillor Apple.
I have to declare a conflict of interest in item eight.
Item eight? And we'll be just sitting back from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have you noted that? And thank you councillor. The first item on the agenda is the confirmation of the minutes... Probably along with the rest of you, I'm swapping between bits of paper and bits of screen, so bear with me as I get used to it. Yes, the item six, confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting. I move from the chair that we confirm the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on 25th of October 2016 as a correct record. Seconded councillor Staines. Any discussion councillor Vandis?
At the time when we moved the item relating to the adoption of the new code of conduct, I sought clarity from our head of governance regarding section 7.2, something quite new to our code of conduct. And that says that elected members are to disclose to other members, and the chief executive where appropriate, any information that is received in their capacity as an elected member that concerns council's ability to give effect to its responsibilities. It's quite a mouthful. It has quite a number of repercussions depending on how it's interpreted. I understand that the definition of information, the definition of what council's ability to give effect to its responsibilities is, that those things are being sought. In the meantime, I've already been threatened with this code of conduct section by Chief Executive Bidrose because I made a health and safety question regarding the Dunedin City Council's ownership.
Before you continue, given that you've made an accusation or an allegation, I would give it, Chief Executive, once he gets his mouth closed, to respond to that.
Actually, what I did councillor Vandis, was you did an OIA around some health and safety concerns that you said a member of the public had alerted you to around the Wall Street building that we own. I came back to you, quoted the act, quoted the new standing orders that LGNZ prepared and said, completely under your interpretation, is there anything in here that that means you would disclose to me? Allowing you full latitude to make that determination for yourself. That's all I did. I'm happy to circulate the email. There was no threat at all implied or stated.
I can read the relevant line in the email. I have it in front of me. And you said...
Point of order.
Mister Chairman, the member accused the chief executive of threatening him. She claims that is not the case. I think there's a need for a ruling that has to be withdrawn and apologised.
I am obliged to take the chief executive's comment at its face value.
And not mine.
And I invite, yes, not yours exactly. And I invite you to withdraw the allegation of a threat, please.
I'm happy to withdraw the allegation, given that I can read the email concerned.
No. I'm asking you to withdraw it.
I am withdrawing it, but I insist on the right to actually make public the email concerned.
My ruling is not subject to any conditions. You will withdraw.
I have, and I agree to withdraw.
Now, the email says... Point of order. You will not read the email.
Your worship, I don't believe that it's ultra virus for you to refuse to allow me to make public an email that the chief executive has sent to me.
I'm going to rule this. I've ruled on it. You've withdrawn. Please sit down. There's a point of order, and I'm going to rule on that one. Point of order.
Thank you. I think that the matter that's now being debated is actually not a matter before the council. It is a matter on the standing orders, whether they were or not moved and accepted at the previous council meeting. That is it. The point of what happened after that is not a point that's up for discussion or debate today.
So I was about to say exactly that. We are here just for clarification to decide whether these minutes accurately reflect what happened at that meeting. That's what we'll be voting on. Ms Rusha has offered to confer with you regarding your comments, which are outside the remit of this discussion. So we will now move on. Is there any other discussion on the accuracy of the minutes? There is none. I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Next.
No recorded, please.
Carried. Now, we're moving on to the next thing, which is the item seven. Is there anything you'd like to...
I can just say that we've, the council has made submissions on the block offer since its inception.
Better context to previous submissions, so we know what.
I'll just be very quick, but basically the council has submitted on the block offer that the government has had in place since 2012. And in the past few years, ran a community kind of feedback process where the community were allowed to offer their views on the offshore oil and gas proposals, mainly in light of the fact that the government has not opened up this process to public consultation, but only to EWE and to affected councils. So this is the current year's block offer. And we've put together a submission based primarily around previous block offer submissions, but also the resolution that the previous council made in November last year to call on the government to place a moratorium on offshore oil and gas.
Okay councillors, I'm going to open it up to questions. Councillor Vandis.
Did any of the previous submissions that we made to the government have any identifiable effect on their continuing to offer block offers?
No.
Given that they didn't have any effect, why would we go to the time, trouble and ratepayers' expense of continuing to do this?
Well, that's not a question for staff councillors. It's a question for the council. And we'll decide that when we vote on it. Councillors, are there any further questions? Oh, it's been moved. There's a mover, that's indicated. Sorry, what are you pointing at?
I just want to make the point that because the submission is based essentially on last submission and on the report that went to November, there's very little staff time involved in putting this together.
Are there any further questions? Councillor Wylie.
Your worship, before I ask my question, I just want to let it known that I, one of the submitters actually said that I was referred to, that some councillors may benefit from this. I'm spokesperson for Pro Gesso Tago. I'm not paid by them or anything on that basis. There is no benefit from me from Pro Gesso Tago. And nor did I receive any contribution, donations or anything for my campaign from the Pro Gesso Tago or as far as where anybody from Pro Gesso Tago. So I found that actually a little insulting, but anyways.
Are you clearing a conflict or...?
No, I just wanted to put it on the table because I actually did seek Ms Graham's...
Oh, that's it. Sure.
No question of that. Now, 3.2. I like my paper better. Page nineteen, is it?
Page eighteen.
Yeah, here we go. Community feedback. The community position has been consistent does not favour offshore oil and gas exploration extraction. How do we get that community feedback? Have we surveyed the community? Or are we just taking on what's been made to the annual plan submission process on the question of fossil fuels?
Yeah, no, that line is, follows on from the previous paragraph where we're saying that we have not undertaken a community feedback process this year because of the timing of the block offer consultation, which ran over the local government elections. But that based on the previous years, the position of the community has been consistent and not in favour of offshore oil and gas.
Are you referring to the silent majority or the vocal minority?
No, we're referring to the submissions that we received through those feedback processes in the previous years.
Okay, so you believe in the submission, putting the submission together, that the majority of the residents of Dunedin believe that gas exploration off the coast of Otago or government issued submission is about exploring, it's not even about extracting?
As with any community consultation process, we can only base what we put in the submission on the submissions that we receive. And the submissions that we received in previous years were consistently not in favour of offshore oil and gas.
Okay. I look forward to seeing that actually. 4.1.
Can I just clarify? We've already, that was from last year. We've already seen that. We already have it.
I actually went through last year's meeting last night to verify that. And we actually, again, I had the same debate last year, so I'll leave it at that. Again, 4.1. Appears difficult for NZPAM to quantify precise benefits that Dunedin community in calls for more detailed analysis. Does enterprise Dunedin not have the benefits of what's already benefited from exploration off our coast?
New Zealand Petroleum Minerals have not managed to provide any additional information to us. I think we've requested that information about local benefits or some work to be done on the tangible local benefits that Dunedin have received from offshore oil and gas exploration. And we have yet to receive that. We have never received that from them. No, that's exploration, because that's been specifically around the block offer process.
Does Enterprise Dunedin not have that information from previous exploration? Bed nights, hotel nights?
No.
Local companies receiving it?
We have some anecdotal information. We don't have any hard information on the economic benefits for the local economy.
Okay, I understood there was, okay. 4.4, should be noted that there is no information available potential economic advantages at the local level. The cost of local ratepayers of any infrastructure, infrastructure, the impact of visible offshore exploration, infrastructure on tourism. Is that not all about extraction and not exploration?
No, it's about both. And there's discussion, there's been discussions with New Zealand Petroleum and Minerals over the past few years, that that idea of the local infrastructure that would need be even exploration, they haven't looked into that at all. That hasn't been consulted at all.
And is, sorry, 4.5. Has no one from the Dunedin City Council talked to the New Plymouth City Council about the benefits they've received?
I think we've had several conversations over previous years and they're definitely, New Zealand Petroleum Minerals constantly refer to. But as far as you can extrapolate from the results that New Plymouth has seen to what Dunedin would see, I think there's quite a lot that would need to be done before we could just say that's what's going to happen in Dunedin. But there's a lot of analysis that would actually need to be done.
But based on what I'm reading from the submission, is it, it's showing that there's, the way the wording is, that there is no benefits to Dunedin?
I think it's, we've questioned whether there's evidence of the benefits to Dunedin.
You question the benefits to Dunedin?
We've questioned any evidence of benefits.
Wow, I would second guess that with the many companies that supported them in the past. Okay. The 4.7. I look at that and I go, why are we, we consistently talk about, and even some of the submitters want to talk about oil, to get their messaging and their ideally visuals across, when this is actually gas, gas condensate and oil exploration? So I'm sorry, why are we just focusing on the oil sector in that sense?
We could replace the word oil with petroleum if that would work.
Okay, that would be great, thank you. And... Yeah, okay. All right, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Further questions councillors? Okay, councillor Hawkins has indicated he wants to move something. Do you, you may wish to read it out. Now, bear in mind, we don't have a screen, so it will have to be read out. And then we might find some way, if it's complicated. Good. And do you have a second? Well, when you read it out, we'll find, we'll get a second.
Sure. Thank you worship. The motion is that the council approves the draft submission to New Zealand Petroleum and Minerals on block offer 2017 with the addition of a part 1.2 that reads, in line with its existing policy, council submits that all applications to block offer 2017 be declined.
Is there a second to that?
Yep.
It's the Vincent Pope. Now, how, can I suggest?
It's in there, Bruce Lee.
Can you, can you email that to all councillors and to Pam? And that way, we will have an opportunity to have it in front of us.
I may need a moment.
You may need a moment.
Take.
The councillors treat this as an exercise in cross-council communication. For the benefit of the understanding of the people in the audience, this is only the second meeting we have used non-paper-based agendas, which is why I've got so much of this stuff flapping around here.
It's got to appear and have a V8. It's very little to do with cohousing, although it's all interrelated.
So I'll read it out again. The resolution, the motion is that council approves the draft submission to New Zealand Petroleum and Minerals on block offer 2017 with the addition of, in line with its existing policy, council submits that all applications to block offer 2017 are declined. So is everyone receiving that?
Aye.
Able to read? Okay. Councillor Hawkins, can I invite you to speak to your motion?
Yeah, thank you worship. And I didn't imagine that this would be a particularly controversial motion that reflects, as it does, a standing resolution of council. And I feel for staff who didn't feel like they could draft something a little more stronger that does reflect that resolution, but it is completely understandable. As submitters to public forum have suggested, I'm not here to debate the science behind the long-term climate effects that we are seeking to mitigate with this motion. Nor am I particularly interested in relitigating a policy debate of November 2015. That is council policy, we can't contradict it. We could choose to stay silent on the issue if we want it. But our community time, and again, have told us that they feel very strongly about this issue. And it would be something of an abrogation of our duty, I believe. Not just the eloquent presentations we had before our meeting here today, but through previous block offer submissions, through our submissions we received on Te Altoroa, our city's environment strategy, to the hundreds of people who appeared at a day's notice at the Glenroy Auditorium to speak to the Ministry for the Environment's consultation process on our INDC targets, all the thousands of people who marched down George Street and rallied in the octagon in support of this country taking a stronger stand on climate action. So I'm not here to relitigate all of that. In November 2015, for context, that was the week of COP21, the 21st meeting of the Conference of Parties in Paris, where the Paris Agreement was eventually signed, which aims to keep global temperatures to below 1.5 degrees above pre-industrial levels. That was ambitious and remains ambitious and requires far more concrete action plans to deliver on that. But it's now ratified and exacerbating the challenges is that we face is looking for, as has been pointed out multiple times, are looking for more deposits of fossil fuels when we know that at least 80% of known deposits are more than we can safely burn to meet our obligations as a country under the Paris Agreement. It's time to turn our minds now to use what we can safely to build what we need and transition to the low-carbon society that our children and grandchildren expect of us. We need to redouble our efforts in this regard. This isn't just an environmental issue, as has been pointed out, it's a social justice issue. We know that the sharp end of the stick will be firmly pointed towards people who are least capable of absorbing that, communities that are already struggling, low-lying communities both here in Aotearoa, New Zealand, our Pacific neighbours, and indeed, as droughts and floods affect subsistence living communities all around the world. Reading this paper and reading the submission, I initially thought that perhaps a sharp two-line response, such as I've suggested, would be enough. But increasingly, I think the context that's provided in it is very valuable. Our communities deserve a say in how our natural resources are managed, how sustainably they're managed now and into the future. They don't, through the block offer process. The public cannot submit on the block offer 2017, although within a year or so, they won't be able to submit on resource management at consent processes either. So that shouldn't be necessarily a surprise in the direction that public consultation is going. It's telling, isn't it really, that the block offer process is run by MBE and not the Ministry for the Environment. Evidence, as has been pointed out, of economic benefit to Dunedin is scarce off of offshore activity and weak really compared to the evidence that we have in the submission of the economic benefit to this community of our natural environment, whether that's through wildlife tourism ventures or otherwise. We also know that the costs of adapting to a changing climate are disproportionately carried by local councils and local communities at present. While the benefits of offshore discovery are largely taken by the crowd who have expressed very little interest in helping us here in Dunedin and other communities around the country with the costs associated with that adaptation work at this stage. And so those are all valid points well made. And I appreciate the time taken to copy and paste them into our submission for 2017. We now have a policy with which to make a submission on block offer 2017. And I think it's best articulated with the amendment to section one calling on all applications to this process to be declined. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Vandis.
I thank very much the submitters for being very clear in their submission and for their impassioned pleas for us to actually represent them to central government. I recognise that there are many hundreds of people that the submitters represent. But come up against the issue that we have constantly with trying to get an idea of what the people really think here. One of the methods that we have is through submissions. Relatively torturous, usually written process, in which my experience as a councillor is that very few of our ratepayers are prepared to engage in that particular process. To engage in a formal submissions process to council, you have to be very dedicated, very organised and understand something of the process to actually get your submission in. So whereas I fully accept that the very strong majority of the submissions that we have received through the submission process would support this submission to government, my experience as a councillor, and it's very long experience now, is that most of the people I represent think I'm a bit of a snort getting around in an electric, non-polluting vehicle and going on about the solar panels that I run my farm on. And that in fact, they simply accept that the petrol that they use in their car is better than the coal that's being burned at far greater effect in places like India and China. And that a transition to gas is actually better again. A number of the submitters talked about transition. But that transition that they spoke of was not one of going from a less harmful fuel, from a very harmful fuel to a less harmful one. It was going from all fossil fuels which they dumped together into completely renewables. I don't believe that that is practical. I don't believe that the submissions that we have received are representative of the wider community who continue to use cars with gay abandon and haven't adopted the electric vehicles and the sustainable options that are available already to the degree that would suggest that they were really that keen on the kind of submission that we are making. So I have no objection actually to this submission going in because I believe there's actually quite a bit of balance in this submission. The submission talks about possible benefits as well as the negatives and the very emotive drowning seabirds business. So, but I do, I do have that doubt that in making submissions based on the written submissions that we get, rather than our personal experience as councillors, our experience of going to the lunchrooms and the, and places of work of people and just talking with people who use diesel and petrol every day and who quite frankly couldn't conceive of trying to run their transportation business, their farm or anything else without it. Because simply, there are no alternatives currently, unlike what has been suggested by some of our submitters. So having planted the seed of that doubt that this submission represents a relatively small vocal section of our community, and that the majority of our community really is fairly happy to kind of transition slowly and that gas might actually be the option. I think on that basis, to represent the people that voted for me, I should actually vote against sending in a submission at all.
Further speakers. Councillor Wylie.
Well, I think it'll come as no surprise that I won't be supporting this motion. I don't think this submission is very balanced at all. I struggle with... I struggle with, when I look at option one and three to submit on the block offer, it clearly says it may not reflect the current council's nor the community's position on the issue. And I think exactly that, it doesn't clearly show the community's position on the issue. During the campaign, I heard very loud and clear that the majority of Dunedin is actually very supportive of exploration. Even I would not be a big fan of seeing oil off our, being drilled off our coast, but I'm extremely supportive of seeing the gas industry extracting off our coast. And that's one of the biggest problems I have is I keep hearing oil, 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 because guess what, it gives them the pictures, the graphics and the story that these groups want. If we stuck to the facts and actually said it's about gas exploration off our coast, I think that would be very different and should actually be the real message. I also get very sick of the negative messaging against the growing economy we have here in Dunedin. There are benefits and I can't believe one staff department can't ask another staff department what those benefits are when we are submitting for the council. I consistently go back in my mind through probably 2013, 2012. Enterprise Dunedin put a great video out on the positioning of Dunedin as a gas exploration base. It talked about the benefits, it talked about what we had to offer. In fact, the mayor did a great job in voicing that and selling our city as a great place. So I consistently struggle with what I consider the minority view trying to dictate to the majority of our residents. I think to sort of move this forward, we do have to ask the community as a whole as part of the 2018 annual plan submission and get a clear message and let everybody have a say through that process. Because I'm sick of being held, you know, basically under paper and paper and all these words saying that the community wants what's on our, we're trying to push through. The community don't want that, in my opinion, and that's what I've consistently heard in loud and clear. And when I consistently hear about the South Dunedin flood being linked to offshore exploration, I'm sorry, that's a very long bow to pull. You've got to actually start looking at facts. Let's stick to the facts and let's see, as I said earlier, gas produces 50% of greenhouse gas emissions versus coal. I think globally, we want to get coal off the radar and gas is a great way to do that. Even oil's better than coal. But that, let's look at the real issue is we have to transition the major industries around the world off coal. But I don't want to consistently hear from submitters that government doesn't understand science and that people like me aren't taking responsibility for my community. If you don't agree with them, they attack you and that's what really frustrates me time and time again. So I hope common sense is seen here and I would like to think that we actually either edit this submission to make it more balanced or we don't submit at all. Thank you.
Councilor Maddick.
I just want to propose an amendment to point five, point six. The Dunedin City Council suggests the government put in place a disaster management plan to include. I've just sent you the amendment to it, which is I want to include the words marine oil spill in the disaster management plan to, so that when we're asking for equipment to be in place at a national level, we have it there, so if we have another issue like RENA, we're also got that in place. It's just basically to strengthen that statement to include it, to broaden into a wider area. Did you receive the email?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm happy to incorporate that.
Oh yeah, I did cut you off because I, but I did maybe not on the councillors list.
So can I just clarify, this is process.
Yep, yes.
If the mover and seconder are happy with the amendment, it can be just incorporated into the resolution and that saves us going through a process of you finding a seconder and a formal amendment. So are you, are you happy for me to endeavor to?
Just add that to it.
Yeah.
May I also just speak before I sit down as well, or is that why I need to ask to stand up again? Oh, I also want to speak as well.
Well, yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. So I'll just deal with this for a start, that the mover and seconder are happy with that. Right, so we can just incorporate that as, and so we don't need the amendment, but please speak to the rest of your points.
To the points of methane being a step over form of energy, you have to take into account, if you are going to include that, that methane production in other parts of the world is not just a simple mining production. It's often associated with fracking, which in itself causes enormous damage to the water tables and so therefore is not really, in any way really able to be properly compared to coal because they both have secondary pollution events. You often need to take into account that those are situations in other countries. For our own country, we are mostly around renewable energies. So therefore it's a spurious point to bring up coal in this whole argument at all. The last point should be, we don't drive electric cars. Well, that's only a small technological step away. It is, as we were told today, 1900 there were horses in the street, 10 years later there were cars in the street. 10 to 20 years from now, most of the cars will be electric because they will have a 500, 600-k range and it only incorporates 5% of a national energy production by electricity to power all the cars in New Zealand. Thank you.
Are there further speakers? Councilor Stiles.
Thank you, Your Worship. I wonder a little bit about the statement made that we don't make decisions on submissions received. We actually make decisions on submissions received in many of the things that we debate in this chamber. So in this case, we have had many submissions. We've had them as part of annual plans, we've had them in terms of public forums, we have had them specifically when we asked for submissions around the block offer the last time around. So I see no problem making a decision today based on the submissions we have heard and the weight of those submissions. I also would highlight the fact that, and it's been said today by our submitters, that we have already in the world identified oil and gas fields that if fully utilised would exceed the amount of CO2 in the atmosphere that would drive us beyond 1.5 degrees. And in fact, if we used it all, would drive us probably to that point where we tip the balance and climate change becomes a runaway. So I don't see the point in promoting further exploration, particularly in our waters. Why do we need to know if it's there, if we are of a mind to protect our environment and we have as a country signed an agreement to reduce our hydrocarbon use in order to achieve the goal? So wouldn't it be nice if the big petroleum companies, instead of investing hundreds of millions, billions of dollars in finding where there's more hydrocarbons under the ground, invested that in what is clearly the earth's future, which is sustainable energy? And I, right now, I think we are on that cusp. We're on the same cusp of when we changed from horses to cars. In 10 years' time, I have little doubt that we will be driving predominantly electric vehicles. Like Councilor Vandivus, I own a pure electric vehicle. It is wonderful. I would much rather be driving an electric vehicle for all the reasons, not necessarily that it's running, it's not burning hydrocarbons, but because it's a much nicer vehicle to drive. It's quiet, it's responsive. I don't have to drive into a petrol station. I get home and I plug it in and I plug it in knowing that in New Zealand, most of the energy, in fact, most of the time, most of the energy that I put into it has come from sustainable energy production and that our government has made a commitment to take our entire energy production to a sustainable position. So I don't see why we need to argue about whether we should be saying, no, do not accept a block offer, because in fact, it's the only sensible answer and it seems pointless to put our coastline at risk during the exploration process looking for something that the world doesn't need, that we don't need, that leaves very few dollars in our economy in the exploration phase and we can't even get the facts on that. So my vote definitely goes to say no and no to the submissions.
Councilor Garrett.
As a newly elected council, the community is looking to us for leadership and round this table, we don't represent, if we take the average age of the councillors, the young people who came to speak to us today. And I believe we have a moral responsibility to show leadership to those young people. I need to be able to look my daughter in the face and make the right decision for her and her children and her grandchildren. If we're talking about economic development, and I do think that that is a very important consideration, when I look at the Scottish example, and I just don't have the details at my fingertip, but I do recall researching it some time ago, the benefits were for just a portion of the population. They were not widespread. But if we're talking about economic development, when tourism is a growth sector for our whole city, why on earth would we shoot ourselves in the foot and risk the wildlife attractions that bring the visitors from all over the world? Either through the perception with the exploration of oil and gas or the risk of the vessels out there having an accident and having a RENA-type disaster. I see no sense in that at all, it doesn't stack up. I was interested to note in 5.4 around the impact of exploration activities, and I do take Councilor Wiley's point about exploration versus drilling. The exploration activities on the Royal Albatross Breeding Colony, the iconic species, the yellow-eyed penguins, the hookers, sea lions on the Otago Peninsula. And I also note in 4.6, and I was horrified to note this, that the Dunedin Airport is not big enough to bring in the emergency equipment we would need. I find that extraordinary. So I have no difficulty in supporting the motion. I feel I have a moral responsibility to do so and I feel passionate about that. And I would encourage all councillors to think about that moral responsibility and the leadership that we need to provide the community.
Further speakers. Councilor Wilson.
Thank you, thanks to Councilor Stans and Councilor Vandivus. I've now got electric car in the beginning of big time. It sounds absolutely fabulous way of the future. Not yet, not yet, but I'm good to report this motion for a number of reasons. But first, I just want to rebut a couple of facts. One is, gas is gas and coal is coal and you can't necessarily use some gas to replace coal. If a factory's set up on coal, it won't necessarily just replace it, it'll just add another industry on gas. It is a flawed argument to suggest we can replace and make the world better. It won't work like that. Not a new, the time is right. Since we discussed this last, we've had the Paris Agreement. The government's given us a clear direction. It's a jolly hard pill to swallow that we need to reduce our carbon footprint and a whole lot of other things. It's not easy and I'm very aware that this government especially likes to bring down to our level the decision-making on things that are hard. But I do think we need to show, as Councilor Gary said, that leadership that is required, that we can do this and we need to do it. Otago and Dunedin, it's very, very privileged, have led the way in some ways in renewable resources. I think the challenge is for us to say, if there are $8 million going to be invested in this by the government, which it is, in this government, well, how could we be using that better to get to a much better result for industry in Dunedin? That's the challenge we should be showing as leadership and we should be asking John Christie over there to challenge that is a much better result for the city, rather than saying, let's support the government putting $8 million into this data collection process of exploration. Anyone who's been watching that fantastic Deep Blue Sea program on a Sunday night can just see how little we know about our backyard. Was it Deep Blue Backyard or something? It's a fabulous program. We have got a wonderful marine studies department in our university. We've got amazing natural heritage that we rely on for tourism. There are potentials there that we haven't even considered exploring and what those economic benefits could be. And yet we're prepared to put them at risk for something we equally don't know if it's there and equally don't know if it's valuable. Because it's a heck of a long way to bring, to take those gas resources because they're not going to be used here, we're going to be renewable, they're going to be taken somewhere else to be used. That in itself has another layer of risks that we haven't even gotten to debate today. My last point is, and I spent some time with my nephew this weekend, who's just leaving Dunedin for his second year of study, and to hear him passionately talking about the need for change and climate change. And he isn't the sort of guy that I thought was worrying about these sort of things. He's, what I would have thought was quite the opposite. When you hear the young people talking about passion and the leadership they are looking for from us to make things happen, when you see the people in the streets of America now absolutely upset what's happening there about climate change deniers, there are a whole generation of young people who get this stuff a lot more than us and want us to change. I've sat on the fence of we've been on fossil fuels. I know I sound like a hypocrite, it's the most travelled, I think, car-driving councillor around the table, but it is time for change. Thank you for those that have led the change with your electric cars. I hope to follow suit very soon.
Councilor Newell.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Just to follow on, I've been involved with the protests and the anti-offshore drilling right from the get-go here in Otago, including a trip out to meet the noble Bob Douglas. And basically I've taken a hell of a lot of interest in this. There isn't too much debate to be had unless there was a clear financial imperative for our economy. The fact that the council should be even considering this is just ridiculous. All the science backs up the fact that we need to move away from all fossil fuels, whether they be coal, whether they be oil, whether they be gas. And the difference between exploratory and extraction, we're well aware. May I just also make you aware that Deep Water Horizon was an exploratory well. So the potential for disaster is always there. Is it less with gas? Yes, we understand that. Is it less with our environment? No, we're not going to move from petrol back to LPG to drive our cars and then maybe later transition to electric. Electric is far more efficient, it's far more renewable and it is, as we've seen round this council table here, it is catching on very, very quickly. In 10 to 20 years, we will all be driving electric cars and we'll have a wonderful electric network that is renewable up and down our country. And my obligation is to my whanau, my tamreki and my mokapuna. Way back later on, that I can look them in the eye and say that we did what we could with the information that we had and to try and extract more fossil fuels in this current climate is just ridiculous.
Councilor Lord.
Well, look, I partially agree with both sides of this debate. I see, I see that there are very real benefits for Dunedin and I have also heard them from the Economic Development Unit. Maybe they can't put their fingers on all this information right now, but I certainly know that when the noble Bob Douglas was drilling here, there were motel rooms that were booked out for 80 or 90 days and the bills were paid. They were using our local engineering firm. So look, don't try and think there's no benefits, but also like Councilor Newell was just said, I don't disbelieve that there are risks, like there are risks every day that we deal with. But look, I, I don't agree totally with my comrade here that we should sit there and say that we won't transition. I believe transition is a very common sense. Look, I'd love to have an electric car and one day I will get one, I have no doubt about that. But I grew up in the 1970s and in the 1970s, I can remember millions and millions of people starving in Africa because they didn't have access to food. In spite of wars now and in spite of famines, they still have famines in those lands, people don't die in their millions anymore. And I've been there, I've seen, I've worked with those people and I simply know that those people survive because of fuel and because of agriculture. Even closer to home, look, I've got a farm. 20 years ago, I produced half of what I produce now. I produce over 2 million litres of milk a year and that primarily goes and gets turned into milk powder or a fair percentage of that gets turned into milk powder and exported for the rest of the world. At the turn of the century, when we did have horses, we had about 2 billion people on the planet. Now we're on the cusp of 7 billion people. Now we're on the cusp of 7 billion people. The reality of it is, if we go out of fossil fuels immediately... Now, we had the lady commissioner from the Environment General tell us last year, it didn't matter what we did, there was still going to be a 400 to 450-year time lag before the sea level rises that she was predicting, which were quite astronomical. There was going to be 450 years before we stopped that, if we ceased using all fossil fuel tomorrow. On that benefit, or on that statement, I feel comfortable to say, look, if we're doomed, we're doomed, but I'm happy enough to keep exploring for gas and that we might find something. Now, the statements that are brought out here, we get told that 80% of the world's known fossil reserves can't be used. That's right, I would even accept that there might be a possibility of that. But 80% of the world's fossil fuels includes vast, vast amount of coal. So we're not talking about oil and gas, we're not, don't mistake what we said. 80% of the known fossil fuel reserves, which includes thousands of years of use for this country of coal in the South Island, it includes thousands and thousands of years of coal in Australia. And if we're going to leave that in the ground, that's one thing, I agree with that. But it might mean that we need to take out some gas in the short term. So I can't support this in its entirety.
Any further speakers? Okay, before councillor Benson Pope.
Thank you, your worship. I won't dwell on this, but I think most of the points have been covered. There's a funny mixture of depression and enthusiasm and energy in the room, really. And I'd like to add my thanks to the presenters at the public forum, all of them, because I think they were an instructive and inspiring start to the formal meetings of this new council. People will make what they want of what they said, but I support their initiatives. When I talk about depression, I'm really focusing on the inordinate amount of time that our society, our local community and the New Zealand community have spent re-litigating the inevitable. In 2001, 15 years ago, when I looked rather more like my campaign photograph... I represented this country as part of the delegation at the COP17 meeting in Marrakesh. I recommend Marrakesh. But at that time, the Larsen B Ice Shelf collapsed. We haven't quite heard about the Chinese invention of the global climate change conspiracy at the meeting, but we've come close a few times today. And I'm not going to dwell on what I call the Aramalana Syndrome. We have a city that is built on now tourism and wildlife, the Otago Peninsula, and our access to our close hinterland. Why would we risk anything that puts, that presents threats to that environment? It's really simple. Several years ago, last century in fact, various New Zealand companies thought it would be a great thing to build a smelter on the salt marsh at Aramalana. And thanks to people who didn't like the one big hit, easy fix, we don't have it. Some other people have the long-term problem. And we have a salt marsh that protects the wildlife, that it always did. I think the key issue for the whole community, including the silent majority, and good luck finding them, is to actually move forward and commit to the directions we need to take. No one's suggesting it's going to be easy, but I think the imperatives are pretty clear about not re-litigating the past and, most importantly, encouraging our government, along with the other local government leaders, and I take councillor Wilson's point. It's great to be given the decision-making imperative that our national so often wants to give us. Well, let's tell the government that it's time they stop dragging their feet on New Zealand's performance in this area. And the prime message we can give them today, this month, this year, is probably around their attitude to extractive industries.
Further speakers? Okay, before I come back to councillor Hawkins, I'll give you my perspective. I think there are three parts to this. The first one has been canvassed pretty thoroughly as the scientific part. I don't think there's any debate about that. The second, and I would note that generally these submissions on the block office have very carefully gauged the opinion of the community. And we went to considerable trouble last time, and the result was overwhelming. It was on a proportion of hundreds supporting, you know, no further exploration against one, almost. It was hundreds to one. That's the expression from our community. And frankly, the silent majority argument is spurious. It's basically saying we should only listen to people who won't or don't talk to us. Doesn't make a lot of sense. So the fact is, though, that even the silent majority, like those of us who have electric cars, have moved on and we've changed, and we've learned a lot in the last few years. And councillor Wiley's quite right, I did voice that promotional video. And in the interim, I have learned a lot, and I have changed my views on this. And ironically, I've learned a lot from people a hell of a lot younger than me. And that's why I've changed my views. And I suspect that the silent majority in our city, if you can find them, as councillor Benson Pope says, have also changed their views or are in the process of changing them. The world and Dunedin as part of it is waking up. And I guess the final arguments that have been put forward are about economic benefit. And we haven't been able to identify, and I've had extensive conversations with oil and petroleum, and they say, we can't identify any benefits at the moment. We're certainly not going to lead you up there, and they've been honest about it. They've said, we don't know what the benefits will be, we don't know how many jobs there'll be, and it'll be at least eight years before we find anything anyway. So, but can I point out that if the repercussions from exploiting and burning more fossil fuels are as dire as we know they are to be, why would we say, oh, well, we'll put up with them because we might make a few pieces of silver along the way? Well, I don't think we have any kind of right to trade in our grandkids' future for a little bit of cash now, even if there were an economic benefit. So on all of those counts, I support this motion. Councillor Hawkins, your right of reply.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And we've seen some fantastic choreography on the head of a pin during this discussion this afternoon, whether we're talking about exploration or extraction, whether we're talking about oil or gas or coal or wind. The fact of the matter is, issuing permits for exploration in New Zealand waters, we're exacerbating a problem that we already know we are accelerating to the edge of a cliff for. And I don't think that that's something that we should tolerate as elected members of this community. We've been told to stick to the facts and at the same time, not, wait, not listen to the submissions that we have before us in informing our decision, but instead, listen to the anecdata that's been presented, whether that's the Smoko Rooms of South Dunedin, much lauded, or the local hoteliers and engineering firms. I'm not disputing that the anecdata may be real, but we don't have it. And I think that as an elected body, we owe our community the basic decency of making our decisions based on the best evidence that we have before us. And anything else would be disappointing indeed. The silent majority indeed. Other specters raised, India and China common in this debate. Evil India and China polluting our atmosphere, which ignores the inconvenient truth that this country actually has one of the highest rates of greenhouse gas emissions per capita in the world. And to suggest that because other people are worse, we shouldn't do anything here is frankly cowardly. I too would like to see greater encouragement of support for an uptake of renewable alternatives, particularly in the transport space. But the fact is, the industry won't adapt until it's forced to. And it's not going to be forced to while we still keep writing blank checks to the seabed in our EEZ, which is why, to send a signal to the industry and to this government that we need to adapt and transition far faster than we currently are to meet our obligations, not just to the Paris Agreement, but to our future generations of New Zealand citizens, as has been mentioned around this table. We have to say no. All applications, all further applications to the block offer process should be declined. This is about leadership, as many people have said, and it's encouraging to see so many around this table at our first substantive meeting of Australia and prepared to show that leadership. It is a moral and an ethical issue as much as it is an environmental one. And I look forward to being able to finally send a submission of substance on the block offer process to New Zealand Petroleum and Minerals after this passes of this meeting, to them.
Okay, I'm going to put it now, and I think in the interests of clarity, we should have division.
councillor Benson Pope.
Now, just to explain to the new members that division is when each person is asked to vote audibly a particular way, rather than just chorusing together.
Aye.
councillor Alder.
I was wanting more consultation, so at the moment, I'm going option two.
It's the resolution we've got in front of us is the one that counts.
Oh, okay.
So it's either yes or no.
No. Abstain, sorry.
So, sorry, you're...
Abstain.
Abstain. Do you want to say why?
Well, I just felt like with Mr Vandervis, we need to take the whole of the city with us. And so I think we should have more consultation because we didn't have time for this one, sorry.
councillor Gary.
Aye.
councillor Hall.
No.
councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
councillor Lafisa.
Aye.
councillor Lord.
Aye.
councillor Newell.
Aye.
councillor O'Malley.
Aye.
councillor Staines.
Aye.
councillor Stedman.
No.
councillor Wiley.
No.
councillor Wilson.
Aye.
mayor Callum.
Aye.
Carrie, nine-four with one abstention.
Right, just... Carrie? We'll move on to the next item, which is item eight, which is... Which is the potential investment in the High Street. I'm conscious, councillors, that we've had a submission on this, which clarified some of the points and was able to answer some of the questions. So you may, but you may have questions of Kevin, so can I... Or do you want to preface it with anything? Sorry. Straight to questions, so are there any questions on this paper of... Okay, there are none. Would anyone like, would someone like to move anything? Well, I'll move from the chair, that we agree, option two, essentially, the recommended option, that we agree to purchase the two-bedroom units offered to the DCC. Do I have a second for that? councillor Staines. So... Hang on, I did have some notes here. I think that this co-housing initiative enabled, by going into it with the people that have organised it, council is able to address some of the housing issues that we know exist in Dunedin. Buying into it was consistent with the strategic aims of the council with regard to improving housing quality in the city. The price, we are assured, is the same as if we were doing it ourselves. And indeed, I think it actually relieved some of our staff of some work in that if we were to develop some social housing ourselves on our own land, we'd have to organise the tenders, we'd have to organise the building, we'd have to do all of those things. So this is actually buying into a process where somebody else is doing that on our behalf. And finally, it's a partnership. And over the last few years, my experience has been that some of the most successful initiatives that a council has been involved with are partnerships, with either local business or community groups or other agency, government agencies or whatever. So those are the reasons why I support this option, which is recommended in any case. Can I invite any other speakers to this motion? councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I'm supportive of this. It's positive, I think, to be able to be here in this forum and discussing more inclusive, more organic and more community-focused models of a social housing provision. And I'd like to congratulate urban co-housing Ortaporti for committing to making social housing part of the co-papa of their project. Because without that commitment, we wouldn't be in an opportunity to participate as we are. If we're going to invest in social housing as an organisation, as we have and as we will continue to do, it makes sense for us to take this opportunity. It's an easy win, as the mayor has said, no tenders, no land purchases, sorry, Conrad, no consenting fees, et cetera. And we can get stuck in. I accept that the demographic shifts and the trends identified in the paper have specified particularly a need, an increasing need for one and two-bedroom units. And I also accept that our existing policy around social housing is focused on one and two-bedroom units for elderly residents. But there are a couple of things that make me nervous about us limiting that in the medium to long term. One is our designation as a refugee resettlement centre, which welcomes families from other parts of the world to live in Ortaporti Dunedin. And I think models like the co-housing model are a fantastic option for the provision of social housing for former refugee families. You know, from a monakitanga point of view, to have a community around you and supporting you and helping you integrate into what is a very different world, I would suggest would be a very beneficial option to have. So there's that. And there's also the anxiety I have around the provision of and the commitment to the provision of social housing for family units from central government who seem to be beating a fairly hasty retreat from this space and leaving it up to NGOs and indeed, local government to bridge that gap. So while I'm supportive of this, I would encourage council to revisit a policy around social housing in the short to medium term to see how we can help address those broader issues through this. In the meantime, I look forward to, quite jealous of it actually, being able to place tenants in the urban co-housing Ortaporti Limited project in High Street, quite a mouthful, in the coming years. Thanks.
councillor Wilson.
I'm a bit slow off that mic on this, your worship, but I just want to, can I ask a question of...
Sure.
The three-bedroom that was offered, I think, up at the public forum, the three and a two, which was the suggestion... The report talks about the four not being suitable, but the three, would that be, would you see a role or a place for that? Because I'm just wondering whether in the motion, we should actually leave it to the property manager to have that discussion in further depth and provide for either two-twos or one-two-and-a-three? And would you be happy if that were the motion? Do you think there's room to explore that for the tenants of social housing?
Yeah, just, we've been constrained, if you will, by the current policy. Not to say, as councillor Hawkins has said, we are reviewing it. But in terms of making this, where we are today, it's been looking at one or two bedrooms in this option. But the opportunity, if you will, could be certainly explored with a larger home.
Can I just clarify, Kevin? What's the, what is most in demand? How many bedrooms are most in demand?
So amongst, we receive applications, and the answer is one or two, and we receive applications from all members of the community, not just... We have people presenting at council reception for housing, and they're across the whole spectrum of the community. Absolute... The absolute emphatic demand is one and two bedroom, because that's the generation that's moving into that and finding themselves housing poor. The, we have found that amongst the housing network, we're able to address family accommodation amongst the other housing providers. We've been, or thus far, we've been able to address family accommodation amongst the other providers.
Sorry, the reason I ask that question, Worship, and I totally appreciate our social policy, but I also, having sat on the hearing for the cohousing project, understand how difficult that is to put together, and at the end of the day, I would hate us to be having, re-litigating this later on, because they really can only get it over the bar because they need a three and a two, rather than two twos, because they've got a lot of work to do there, and I'm just wondering in the motion whether we give that flexibility, because if it means that we, there are various ways of skinning this, skinning the cap of social housing, and I, I see the mayor exploring this, I think it's really good that we're going to be the first council in New Zealand doing this, and that we, in, in some ways, this is a very cheap investment to make sure that cohousing happens in Dunedin, whichever way, and I'm just wondering whether we need to give the staff that flexibility in the motion.
Okay, so as I'm asking this question as a mover, you're suggesting that we commit to at least, a two and at least another two, but leave it open at the discretion of council somewhat later, whether we upgrade the second two to a three?
I think it would be really helpful in the negotiations for Orta Potsi, sorry, the cohousing Orta Potsi to do that, because I think they're juggling balls and trying to get all the ducks in alignment, and I think from what I'm also hearing, while the demand is one and two, it could well be that we get someone who just, you know, that, that there are, is a demand out there for three, and it actually may be that we can take someone out of some of the housing, other housing and make it even better aligned toward other markets. So I think there's a movement there, yeah.
Okay, so again, as the mover, I'm happy for you to draw up an extra sentence, but I would, and I'd like to see the second, Councillor Staines, would you be comfortable with allowing that? So I'm comfortable allowing that in with the motion, but I would point out that, given that it's social housing, I'm very much inclined to be driven by what the demand is for social housing, rather than saying, well, maybe something will change. We do know that we're getting most demand for one and twos, and maybe there'll be some other people with three, for one in threes, but that's, that's my concern, because this is a, this is about council needs, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to have that included. So if you could draw up a, so, Councillor Benson-Pope, you're next on the list.
Just a couple of comments of general support, Mr Chairman, and just putting it on the table that I was one of the councillors hearing the original consent, and it was a really interesting consent. I've checked that there is no issue in me making any comments about this decision. But I think it's important, because not only would it be something that will help the project get off the ground, and certainly further, much further down the track than I thought it might be at this stage, and I guess I should add my compliments to the people who've been driving it, but I'm also delighted to hear the commitment to the passive house concept. I have a friend who's just built one, and it's, it's very exciting, especially in terms of the comfort levels and the very low energy use, so I think that was a very, very bright decision. But the most important thing, I think, is if we commit to whatever configuration here, is that it's an important message from the city, that this is a, a model of housing that is to be supported and should be encouraged, and I think, I think that really says it all, and that's the key message, and again, congratulations to the people who've been instrumental in putting a very fine concept together, not without difficulty.
Mr Councillor O'Malley.
I'm generally supportive of this motion, I just, I think it's, to some extent, it's a good way to experiment whether or not this model can work on a relatively defined amount of investment. I tend to be evidence-driven, and so I think one of the things I'll be liking to see is demonstration that this will work and how it will play out. And just a general question to Mike, how many new builds are we doing for social housing in the next 12 months?
We're not doing any new builds in the next 12 months. The next project that we've got developed is on council land that was purchased a couple of years ago, and it's also a passive house design, passive house model, we're yielding about the same number of units, one and two bedroom units, on a parcel of land, and we're, we've worked shopped with councillors, the previous council, and we're now in the feasibility design phase at this stage of it.
So just to clarify this.
That won't start, sorry, councillor, it won't start until, sorry, I'd answer your question probably, it won't start until June 2017 before we can get that build underway.
So this will constitute pretty much all the new material being put into the system this two, 12 months?
Yes, it'll, it'll consume more of your budget for the past three, or the, the last two years, or current year, last year, and the year coming.
Councillor Lord.
I'll just ask a question of Kevin's work.
Sure.
So the question is, how is it proposed that we fund this? Is this out of the, like, as I understand it, while it is rate payer's asset, the portfolio of houses that is owned by the, by the, you know, all our units, it doesn't actually pay a dividend to council and it wipes its own face, so to speak? That's right?
Yes, that's correct.
And is that where you would do, where you would take the money for this?
The capital will come from that, from the housing fund, new housing build fund.
So, so there would be no, and sort of additional-
No additional rate burden, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Further speakers? Okay, Councillor Wilson, how are you going?
It should be with you about now. It's just a very limited change. With a discretion to the CEO and the property manager to agree on a three unit if there's a perceived demand.
So agreed to push at least two, two bedroom units offered to the DCC, but with scope to the sense property manager and the CEO perceive a demand upgrade, perceive a demand, comma, upgrade one unit to a three bedroom unit?
Yep.
I'm comfortable with that, is the second, comfortable with that? So is everyone happy, do they understand what the resolution, what the motion is? Okay. So no further speakers? Okay, well, and just in concluding, I guess, one of the reasons I agreed to the recommended option is primarily around demand, and one of the reasons that I would be nervous about the five bedroom option is that insofar as it was aimed at refugees, I wondered whether one family of refugees in a place where there was no option for any more families of refugees would not provide sufficient cultural support for that group, and I, I would be supportive of if there would, the ability to have two or three five bedroom units, and you could have a cluster of, of former refugees, but I think in this instance, this offers a tremendous amount to people who definitely need, need the housing anyway, so I think the option of, of two twos or a two and a three, if that's what's needed, is, is a really good opportunity both for council and for the community. Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carrie, thank you. Right, on to the next item, which is meeting date, item nine, let's get back on track here. Ms Graham, I take it you're on this? So, can, can you, or do you want to just go straight to questions? Does anyone have any questions of this paper? It's a largely process, and the membership so, so is there any, any questions?
Happy to move.
Move to Councillor Staines, second to Councillor Wiley, is there any discussion? Good, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. On to item 10, appointment of the Taga Regional Transport Committee. Pretty straightforward, again, is there any questions on this, Councillor Wilson?
Your worship, I'm not sure-
Is it conflicted by any chance, eh?
No, I don't think I'm conflicted, but I think that the opposition should be by, made by position rather than by name, so I'd ask that those be as Chair of Infrastructure Services and as Deputy Chair, please. That's what's consistent.
That's appropriate.
No?
So we changed the recommendation to that the council appoints the Chair and Deputy Chair, oh no, the Chair of Infrastructure Services Committee to the Taga Regional Transport Committee, with the Deputy Chair to act as an alternate representative.
Thank you.
Right, any discussion on that? Being done, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. On to item 11, which is Subcommittee of, Councillor Staines and Councillor Wiley.
So councillors, the Subcommittee appointments in terms of reference, we had hoped to have the full terms of reference for all of the committees to this meeting, but it's just taken us slightly more time than we had hoped to pull them together, and so they will be coming to the meeting on the 6th of December. However, in order to give effect to two meetings that we have coming up, we've had to roll over the existing terms of reference for the Grants Subcommittee to enable them to meet on the 22nd, and roll over the Hearings Committee delegations to enable, I think it's three, it might be four, resource consent matters to be dealt with before the new delegations are considered. So apologies that we didn't have the full manual together, but the reconstitution and the rejigging of the roles and responsibilities meant that we didn't have it completed and peer reviewed in time.
Okay, and I will, are there any questions before I, well, maybe I'll just clarify it anyway, and then maybe we won't need questions. I will move it from the chair, because it's my appointment, and I note that the appointed members weren't specified in the paper, and I'm going to include them in the recommendation now. So the recommendation A approves the terms of reference, stays as it is. Recommendation B notes that the mayor has appointed councillors Lafiso, Gary, Wiley, Wilson and Hawkins to the, to the Grants Subcommittee, the Chair being Councillor Hawkins and the Deputy Chair being Councillor Wiley, and Recommendation C stays as it is. Is that, is everyone quite clear about that? All right, is there any discussion? Being done, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried, and I think the, Councillor Staines. Right, and the second part of this is the Hearings Subcommittee, and again, anyway, I meant to put the names in here, so the Hearings Subcommittee, let's get to the recommendation. Where's the recommendation? Quite a long way in. Is it near the top? Yeah, wait a minute, no, no. Okay, do you want to preface this with some?
Councillors, for the Hearings Subcommittee, we have a, a number of councillors who are trained commissioners, and the plan is that we will arrange training for councillors who, and a couple of other councillors to provide additional capability in this area, and once those councillors have been trained, they'll be added to the membership of this committee.
Okay, trying to find it on the screen. So, okay, so the recommendations here, the first one, A stays the same, B notes that I've appointed elected members, I'm wrong. Bear with me. Oh, sorry. Okay, so, well, it's accepted this one changes, there are no independent members being appointed at the moment, so that was referenced, that's what put me off, there's independent members referenced in the Grants Subcommittee, but not in the Hearings Subcommittee, so the recommendation will have to change. Yeah, so I note that I, the Hearings Committee will consist of, Councillor Wilson as the Chair, Councillor Benson-Pope as the Deputy Chair, and councillors Lord, Hawkins, Wiley and Vandervis as the other members of the committee, and as councillor, as some, this would be, if she could be. Ms Graham has said, we will be getting on with training up any other, appropriate councillors as soon as we can in the RMA process to add more members, and that doesn't preclude the right of the Chair to appoint those, even those councillors in the interim or other people as commissioners to hearings from, from now. So, I'll put it from the chair, I'll move it from the chair, second to Councillor Staines, is there any discussion on that? Being done, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. And? One more. Oh, the, item 12, the notice of motion, so I invite Councillor Benson-Pope to speak to that, this is his notice.
Thank you, Worship. One of the difficulties with the situation that we find ourselves in, in regard to the operation of the electricity utility companies, is the, the nicety of the relationship with our holding company. I guess it's no, no surprise, but also of no great interest to a lot of the members of the community that we have to follow a certain regime, and we've had some interesting adhered debates in this room prior to now about people wanting access to directors and or staff of companies which are part of the DCHL group. Clearly, there's no issue with the advice that we have, and I, I take no issue with it either, that our prime point of contact, sole point of contact probably, is with the holding company that we, we, we appoint to carry out the oversight responsibilities of the group, and I don't think there's need to discuss that further, or I don't think there's any issue about that. And that's why this notice of motion is so clearly focused on a very simple question, not the only question that I hope the ongoing investigations will answer, but a primary question that I certainly want to hear the answer to, and I'd be surprised if anyone at this table didn't, and what that answer is will determine what subsequently happens. I think it's important for the community to know that we are focused like this, because there's always, as investigations like this proceed, much more delay than one would hope, but equally, we do want to have things thoroughly investigated, and that will take time. I've got no issue with the objectivity of the investigation, and if, when we have progress or other reports about the investigation, there are other questions that present themselves, then I know other councillors will be asking, and I certainly will too. But I think it's important to keep this quite simple in terms of our responsibilities to, as the ultimate fiduciary owner of all these assets, to the appropriate mechanism. I'd just like to provide one more piece of context around this situation, which I don't think anyone would think is other than totally undesirable, and a place where none of us would really like to be, but this context is really, I think, quite important, and it's from the Delta Aurora Annual Report that we noted at two meetings ago, I think it was, in the previous council, and on page 15 of that report- And on page 15 of that report, I know you don't have it here, but it's self explanatory. Oh, you do have it here. In that case, on page 15, you will find a substantial list of the remuneration levels of employees. Now, I'm on record as appropriately describing the chief executive's remuneration as eye watering. But there are 88 people in that list who have some pretty substantial remuneration. And I'm just putting that on the table. What comes below that is a paragraph in the report about their, Delta and Aurora's Audit and Risk Committee. And that Audit and Risk Committee has responsibilities as follows. Ensuring the effectiveness of systems and standards of internal control. Quality of management controls. The management of business risk. Compliance with legislation, standards, policies and procedures. And appointing and monitoring the internal audit function. Well, I'm going to suspend my disbelief for a while until we get some reports about whether those functions have been appropriately and professionally exercised and whether they've been properly exercised. And I think that's the only position we should take. But I'll be very interested in the, in the conclusions that Mr Crombie and his investigators come to about these operations. And so I move that the city asks DCHL, the city council asks DCHL to urgently advise whether or not it still has confidence in the Chair and Board of Aurora and Delta.
Further speaker, further speakers. Councillor Wiley.
I will not be supporting this motion. I believe that the Chair of DCHL has chosen the appropriate actions at the moment in asking for the review and the reviews to be done. When I look back at, when we looked at the annual report, I don't recall anybody raising any issues over the annual report except for the salaries. I didn't see any issues with the directors at that point. I think we all are very surprised at what we've read in the media and we all look at that and do wonder. And I think that is the key about the review is that there will be some clear indications. The part that I look at is the regulatory authority and people auditing Delta, Aurora and our companies have done the jobs that they've been asked of, and I think that's the key. So to challenge or question the board at this stage, I think is way too early.
Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I think it's important, and the reason that I sponsored this motion to come to this meeting today is because I think it's important that we have it on our agenda and to send a signal to our community that we are taking this issue and following this issue as seriously as it currently warrants. We did try and address this at our inaugural meeting, but as, so often the case, process got in the way, which stopped us from doing it. So this is the first opportunity that we've had to do that. I'm sure many of the members around this table will share the frustration that is felt by our community, given the situation that we're currently in. People responding with concern to stories that they have read and demanding both answers and a resolution to that. Unfortunately, for us in the position that we're in currently, there's very little that we as elected members can do to influence the process as it currently stands. I think that the review of the claims that have been made and the concerns that have been raised needs to be thorough, but it also needs to be timely. We can't leave this, leave a void for 12 months allowing both the spread of anxiety unnecessarily and perhaps even misinformation, which would be entirely unhelpful to fill that space. This is, while phrased, simply not a yes or no answer. The quality of the response and the reasons given to justify the response of what will need to be assessed by the Board of DCHL and coming to their conclusions as to whether they have confidence in the Chair and Board of Delta and Aurora and ultimately whether this council have confidence in the Chair and Board of DCHL who will be making that decision. So. To be able, to be able to have a discussion and to share our concerns and express similar concerns that are being felt in our community and give our commitment that we are following this as closely as something of this magnitude that deserves to be.
Thank you, councillor Wilson.
I was happy to support this motion and coming to the council table. And I think we've all come to it from different directions. I would be surprised that anyone couldn't support it though, it actually reflects our role. We have a role to ensure that DCHL, to ask them questions. That is our responsibility and I think from everything I've read, the community expects us to do that. The role of the DCHL, on the other hand, is different, look, going down the chain. They've set up a review, that review is not something they can delegate. In the process of the review, they cannot delegate whether they have confidence or not. That is only a question that they can answer after the review and back to us. For me though, there are two parts to this review, to the confidence question. One is the confidence in the board as relates to the audit, which, page 15, we've been referred to in the annual report. But also is the way that they've handled the issue as it's come public. And those are two different matters. And again, it is our role and absolutely our job to ask that question. To ask it any later than today or to put it on the agenda actually defers that decision well into next year, which isn't what I think would be good process. So I think the community is asking us to do this. I'd be very surprised if we didn't do this, but it has to be done by us, it cannot be done by anyone else. So that's why I'm supporting this motion. And I see it as assistance to the DCHL to ask that question.
Councillor O'Malley?
I'll be supporting this motion. I suspect that Mr Crombie, when he comes back to us, will only be able to tell us that the inquiry is underway and will not be able to give us the answer until the inquiry is finished. So I would presume that this advice of whether or not he has confidence and Chair of the Board will be dependent on that inquiry finishing. So in terms of the urgency, I'm not sure how urgently he'll be able to come back to us. But I think I support it because it does show that we are putting a lot of emphasis on whether or not DCHL are performing their duty to us as the holding company overseeing these companies. And it does reflect the frustration that we've seen in the community and I think felt around this table as to the various acts of central government that have made these companies far at arms length to us and ones which we really have very little control over how they operate on a day to day basis. I also want to point out that workplace safety and safety, health and safety are things that probably do extend right back through to us. Even though we cannot extend in that direction, I think the responsibility will come back to us. And just generally speaking, in the annual report and things that could have been raised, I did not have the honour to be sitting at this table two meetings ago. So I didn't have the chance to raise anything beyond, although I did notice councillor Benson Pope at the time raised salary issue. But just going back to page seven, and we're talking about safety. They, Aurora reports that 1,300 mechanical tests and 500, and 5,000 manual tests were completed last year. Now, if we believe there are 55,000 poles, that means 11% of the poles, only 11% of the poles were tested in the last calendar year. It makes me wonder to the extent to which the testing regime has in fact gone and captured all of the problem that we're facing. And upon knowing that number, I did a little bit of my own little investigation, I walked up and down North Road where I live. Everything on the northbound lane is marked, about 6% of the poles have tags on it. Not a single pole on the southbound lane has a tag on it. And they aren't very much different in condition. So I'm also raising the concern that maybe not, testing has itself also not necessarily been as robust as we think it could be. So I'm very interested in Mr Crombie's response.
I'm very much in favour of it. You know, councillor, over time is, communication has been a big letdown of it, of telling our community what we are doing. I think this is a clear signal, telling our community that we are angry ourselves and are actually working there for them and that it's not going to be put to the side and brushed to the side. And we, we do want answers, so there's a clear indication to our community in telling them that we will get a resolved. Thank you.
Councillor Law?
Yeah, I'd just, I'd just like to say that I'm not angry. I'm not angry and I don't want to send a signal that I am angry. I think we do want a response, I think we'll get a response. The mayor has already asked for a response from Graham. Graham has gone, there's, there's reviews in place and I'm happy to not support this motion on that. I don't like, what I don't like about this motion is it's been tied in with the chief executive's salary. And that, if we start getting involved with chief executive's salary, in my opinion, that's, that's where we're starting to meddle in an area that's not ours. If we're not happy with the board about his salary, we should have made a decision long before this point and had that argument out. But when you mix the two, I just get quite nervous, so I'm not going to support the motion. And yet I, oh, well, just getting up the speaker, second I, just, I know that's against the standing orders too. No, what I, what I would say is that it's not that I don't care about public safety, but I think the steps are in place and I think the steps have been taken, so that's my position.
Further speakers? Okay, and speaking to this, I'd note that the relationship between the council and the DCHL and subsidiary companies must be one of confidence. It's about confidence. And that's why this notice of motion is appropriate to ask the question in a public setting. Now, councillor Benson Pope has referenced the fact that this is not the only question that needs to be asked. And I think, actually, the safety question is more important because people's lives are at stake. So putting, but putting that aside, this is an appropriate formal governance oversight question of the Board of DCHL. I do not see it as hostile in any way to DCHL, it's actually supportive of them. It's recognising their role and acknowledging that in public. And I can have conversations, in fact, any of the elected members can probably have conversations with board members of DCHL, but they are informal, they're not a public. And this puts it on the record that council takes its governance and oversight and confidence responsibilities seriously in asking the Board of DCHL to express its confidence. So I'm more than happy to support this notice of motion. Councillor Benson Pope, you're right.
Thank you. Well, the only new mess that was raised was the curious interpretation of the motion by councillor Lord. There's no reference in the motion to anything to do with the chief executive of Delta's salary. I think it's obscene, but it's not my business actually because I'm not his employer. I've told Mr Crombie incidentally what my views are, so he's in no doubt about that either. But I'd ask councillor Lord and the rest of the councillors to actually read what the motion says. It's not intended to be lost off, it's to ask with urgency. A question which may not be replied or able to be replied to immediately or with urgency, but answered it will be. And if the councillor can't do that, then I'd really wonder what any councillor's doing at this table.
Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Division, please.
Division?
Councillor Benson Pope?
Aye.
Councillor Alder?
Aye.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Hall?
Aye.
Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councillor Laffiso?
Aye.
Councillor Lord?
Aye.
Councillor Newell?
Aye.
Councillor O'Malley?
Aye.
Councillor Staines?
Aye.
Councillor Stedman?
Aye.
Councillor Vandervus?
Aye.
Councillor Wiley?
No.
Councillor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Carried, 12-3.
Okay, that's carried. And that, councillors, is the last item on the agenda. So I bring this meeting to a conclusion and thank you all for your contribution.